All right, let's get started this evening. A little meeting in order. As usual, we're going to go through just a general review of how we're going to handle the meeting this evening so everybody's on the same page and then we'll get started. So, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled September 25th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by Mike Slivka, Tim Moran, Mim Evans, Community Development Director David DeGroot, City Planner Matt Busing, and Assistant Planner Jesse Muncy. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing for Agenda Items 5A through 5C. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the applicants, public, and Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing and staff will present a summary of their report. The applicants will then provide an opening statement and brief overview of their requests. Commission members will then have first opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding their requests. Audience members will be called on and given opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from hearing off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to their requests being considered. Following the end of public testimony, the applicants will have an opportunity to answer questions or respond to any comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may then be stated by the Commission. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by Commission deliberation on separate requests. In order to help the quality of the meeting broadcast, remind all Commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking or prior to a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, yea or nay. If you wish to speak or present testimony at tonight's meeting, please stand and raise your right hand so I'll swear you win.
You guys.
That's you guys. Applicants definitely.
Both, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, if you're going to give testimony. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Please be seated. All right. Any questions on the protocol? All right, great. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Evans.
Evans here.
Holloman. Matuscale.
Me.
Moran.
Moran here.
Slivka.
Slivka here.
Stocking.
Stocking. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Move to approve the agenda, Slivka.
Second, Evans.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, next item is approval of the minutes of the September 11th, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Moran, move to approve.
Seconds, Slivka.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, so, we can get into the heart of things. Public hearings, so the first one is 5A. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment, Section 11-4A-4, proposal to add dwelling units on the ground floor as a special use in the D-CM zoning district. The applicant is, I'm going to apologize in advance, Sudip Palamate, pretty good, and Dawn Mirror. And with that, please, Jesse, you're going to read the record?
Yes, I will read the contents of the file first. So, the contents of the file include an application for a text amendment filed by Sudip Palamati dated August 15th, 2025, and an application filed by Dawn Mirror for the same dated August 27th, 2025, including the following items: a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on September 10th, 2025, for tonight's public hearing, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 25th, 2025. And then I'll give the shortest presentation ever, just introing what you all probably already know, and then the applicants can come up and explain a little bit about it. But keep in mind, this is just for the broad text amendment. This isn't for the special uses, for requesting the special uses. This is requesting it to be added as a special use. Let's get into it. So, there are the applicants. That's the entirety of the DCM district. The request is a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow for dwelling units on the ground floor as a special use in the DCM district. So, the two applicants own two different commercial mixed-use properties at different ends of the DCM district. They happen to be jointly applying for this text amendment because they have similar requests, so we said, why not apply together? And this text amendment would help them provide and other properties, or would provide them and other properties in the district more flexibility in the use. So, that's the presentation right there. And then, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up, explaining a little bit about...
Yeah, later, the applicants.
First of all, thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak here. So, yeah, this request for amending the ordinance, why I'm doing is because of the changing environment of the rental properties. So, as you know, my property was on the market from six to seven months, but there is literally zero interest for leasing it as a commercial office space. So, providing this change will give us a lot of flexibility to add a dwelling unit on the ground floor and make it as a residential. So, that's the main reason we are asking for this, rather than keeping it vacant for longer time.
Okay. All right. Do you want to present, and then I will ask any questions at that point?
Thank you for the opportunity to explain and present. I'm not sure if you are familiar with the property at 122 Hamilton, but it is a very small Cape Cod house, which just happened to end up in the, because of when it was moved in the early 1900s, ended up in the middle of a block that's all commercial. But all the houses across the street are DRS-CM. It is literally 800 square feet on the first floor, and even though the second floor is probably the same amount, it's Cape Cod. So, usable space to even make that rentable or residential would be probably 350, 400, if you're lucky, because of the slants. So, anyway, it was originally a home. I think over time, it was a million different. I've researched it with the city before. It's been a bunch of different properties. Nothing ever lasted long commercially. The intent originally was, when I purchased it, it had been on market for quite a while. There had been a real estate office that had been there for a while, but that was because it was just like, I don't know, hodgepodge. Anyway, my hope had been to put a retail space in it, and I tried it, not any foot traffic. Then I was the first of the two fires that happened in Geneva, right before, what is it, Stockholm's? Mine was two and a half weeks prior and gutted it. So, that's why I haven't come to you sooner, because we were, we purchased it in December of 2022, and we were struggling with foot traffic. And we were trying to decide what we were going to do, and we had come up with the concept of wanting to Airbnb it, but then the fire occurred, kind of put everything on hold. It's actually still in restoration right now. The owners of the property at the time, like I said, it was on the market for at least six or seven months, if not longer, before I purchased it, thinking, having an understanding. And I also thought I had more flexibility with it at the time. Because of the properties across the street, I didn't realize, and that was on me. So, anyway, our request now is to consider putting it down there so that we could potentially use it as an Airbnb or an office, depending. A lot of office spaces now, they want to be able to have a kitchen, cafeteria, anything. We couldn't have that in the property as it was, and if I put a kitchen upstairs, Dustin would be coming looking for me after this fire, so not an option. But, so for practical considerations, the limitations of the property use for upstairs, finding somebody to rent it, it's our request to you. Our hope is to use it as an Airbnb with the proximity to all the shops. I actually moved my shop to downtown Third Street, and I'm hoping to be able to network everything together. Other than that, my other thought is maybe long-term even living in there myself, when I'm too old to deal with the two-acre lot I've got now. But under the current zoning, it's not even an option, even though I love that house and I love the area and the history with it. So, anyway, hopefully, I covered it all. If anybody had any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any questions from the Commissioners? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to confirm that...
It's your mic, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to confirm the property at 828 West State Street would be two units, two residential units, and the one on Hamilton would be one unit? Okay. Just wanted to make sure I had that right. Thank you.
Comments? Yes, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I believe so. Nobody has any other questions. Is there anybody in the public wishes to speak on this matter? Sir?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
My name is Marcus Olsson. I live at Ninth Street in Geneva, so I am adjacent to Sudip's property, and I have no problems with him doing the renovations necessary for his property, so no concerns on this side.
No concern? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? One other in the building? Okay?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Evans.
Moved and seconded. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request to amend Section 11-4A-4, the Geneva's zoning ordinance, to add dwelling units on the ground floor as a special use in the DCM commercial mixed-use district.
Slivka, second.
Moved and seconded. Rebecca.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Stock.
Stocking, aye. All right, DC, good. All right, and then moving forward. Our next item is 5B, and so we'll take them as they come. So, 828 West State Street, special use, a request for a special use permit to allow a ground-floor dwelling unit at subject property. Applicant is Sudip Palamate. Okay, the contents of the record, yes?
Yes, I'll read the contents of the file. The contents of this file include an application for a special use permit filed by Sudip Palamati dated August 15th, 2025, including the following items: project narrative, plot of survey, legal description, warranty deed, King County Road impact fee application, NRI, no-report letter dated August 21st, 2025, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit testing to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on September 10th, 2025, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 25th, 2025.
Thank you.
And a little bit of background, although Sudip gave a little bit of background already. Just an image of the location of the property here. He is requesting a special use permit to allow for that ground-floor dwelling unit at the subject property. Just noted that there was, there is a special use on it already, but it's for an office use that is now a permitted use in that district, so it's a 1980s special use. This is the comprehensive plan. It is, the comp plan for it is downtown commercial mixed-use. It meets all of the special use standards. And then, just a quick analyzation of parking. So, it is in the special parking district, DCM, DRC, DRCM special parking district. So, that outlines certain parking parameters for that district. And then, if it was to be a residential conversion, which is what this is, it has reduced parking requirements. So, that's why with this, there is a single two-bedroom unit that would require 1.5 spaces, so with this conversion, it would have two two-bedroom dwelling units requiring a total of three parking spaces. Those are already provided and marked out. So, that is a picture of it and the plot of survey, and then the applicant can come back up if there are any more questions about this specific request again, or...
Yeah.
Do you have anything else to say?
Do you have anything you wish to add to this, sir?
Yeah, same thing. Despite my efforts, I have found it increasingly difficult to rent this to an office space. It was on market for seven to eight months. I'm very flexible on rent and terms, but still, there is zero interest. So, adding a dwelling unit on the ground, allowing me to add the dwelling unit on the ground floor will give much flexibility for me, rather than keeping it empty. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, any questions? Pretty much. Comments? No? Yes, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Evans.
Moved and seconded. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. All right, and so, next item is 5C. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the applicant's request in accordance with the Section 1114-4 for a special use permit for dwelling units on the ground floor in the DCM commercial mixed-use district, subject to the findings of fact of city stamp.
Slivka, second.
Moved and seconded. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Stock.
Stocking, aye. All right.
All right, so, we've already talked about it, but we're looking at the October 6th City Council date. Other than that, you're all set. You're free to leave or stay if you want, but thank you for being here.
Yep, thank you. Okay, our next item, following right along, is 5C. 122 Hamilton Street, special use, request for a special use permit to allow a ground-floor dwelling unit at the subject property. Apted is Dawn Mirror. Jesse, assume you're doing it?
Yes, okay. Contents of this file include an application for a special use permit filed by Dawn Mirror dated August 27th, 2025, including the following items: a project narrative, a plot of survey, legal description, fill of sale, email correspondence with King County for the road impact fee dated August 26th, 2025, NRI, no-report letter dated August 27th, 2025, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit testing to the accuracy of the list of property owners within the 500 feet, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on September 10th, 2025, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 25th, 2025. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Here is a little, here is the location of the property. Again, she is also requesting a special use permit to allow a ground-floor dwelling unit on that subject property. Zoning is DCM, as is to be expected. Downtown commercial slash mixed-use for the comprehensive plan. This request does meet all the special use requirements contingent upon a, the downtown, I have it over here, I forgot the name of it. Contingent upon the city-initiated text amendment to Section 11-11A-4, period A, period 2A, which is for properties located within the downtown residential vehicle parking permit area, additional off-street parking shall not be required if an existing non-residential use is converted into a residential use. So, this was presented before you all on September 11th, and it will go before the City Council on October 6th. So, assuming that that, contingent upon that being approved, then this property would not need to provide any parking for the residential use. I think that kind of sums up the, or a little bit more here. So, there's some challenges with parking on-site, so one to two parking spaces would need to be removed if she added a driveway. If she did add a driveway, there's a potential conflict with the location of the electric pole and a future driveway, because every few years, the electric pole has to be moved, and it's in a location right now, or where the driveway would be would make it in that location. So, it kind of hinges, this application hinges upon that city-initiated text amendment being approved. All right. So, Dawn, if you have anything else to say, you can come up or just say nothing else?
The only other thing I would say is, as you can see, I mean, we could put the driveway in it, take out, you know, in request to remove the parking space, but it would take away from the appearance, so our preference is to stay contingent on the parking change, the amendment, text amendment on the parking, because we want to maintain that house to look the way it does now and keep the integrity of the historic appearance. Now, I have a little, if there's any questions?
Then ask one, ma'am.
I just had a question.
Sorry.
If you use it as an Airbnb, as you intend, then you'll just...
Dawn, would you mind walking back up to the podium? I'm sorry, thank you.
Then you would just instruct your customers to use whatever public parking they could find?
Yes, there is, I mean, there is actually a lot right next, where this is, there's a small building here, and then right across the street is a huge public lot, and then right across the street from that is the two churches, where there's a public lot there, and a bunch of on-street parking. Because at first, I was like, okay, how does this work? And I spent a long time, these, the Planning and Zoning Department spent a long time helping me understand where public parking was so that I would be able to communicate that.
Was it, they would have limited, they would have time length, you know, lengths of time, restricting how long they could stay in the space during the day? Isn't it three-hour parking?
The lots on Hamilton do not have those time restrictions.
Those don't?
No, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't understand that question. Yes, no, those are all-day parking.
That all works? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. And yes, Tim?
So, I'm not sure this complies with standard number three. Even under the amended parking ordinance, which I made the motion to amend, because what it would provide is properties located within downtown residential do not need to provide additional parking. There's no parking to begin with. I mean, the concept of additional assumes that you're adding to something that was already there, and here, there is none to begin with. And the underlying assumption, I believe also, is that whatever parking was used for the mixed-use, commercial, and residential was good enough then, it'll be good enough if we just transferred all the residential. But here, there's no additional parking, because there's no parking to begin with. So, I think even under the amended ordinance, I don't think this complies.
Yeah, I mean, I think from our perspective, additional can probably be interpreted in a variety of ways. I mean, for many sites, there wouldn't be any parking on-site, and that amendment would allow for them to not be required to add any parking.
But that's not what it says. And again, I'm the one who made the motion, having read the amendment, additional means you don't have to add anything, but it assumes there's already parking there.
I don't know that that assumption is necessary, though. And again, like you're saying, it's adding additional parking, and if there's no parking, there would be no requirement to add additional parking, so it would just stay at no parking. Would be my thought.
I mean, just looking at the standard, it's, the proposed use will not substantially or unduly increase traffic, traffic congestion, and on-street parking demand in the immediate vicinity of the proposed use. So, I mean, that's really the question we need to answer, is do we think if this were residential, it would increase the parking demand for the site as compared to the commercial use that it previously was, or the potential other list of permitted uses in the district, like an office use or retail use? And the parking demand under the city code for a single-family home would be two spaces.
May I say something?
No, absolutely.
I would also point out that under DCM, I could have residential upstairs, and the parking as it is, I could already have a space up there under the DCM code. So, where we're talking about additional parking, all I'm asking to do is expand it so that it's still going to be one unit. And right now, I'm already technically zoned to have one unit, plus people in office spaces. I actually think it would be more demand if I leave it that way, especially during the day, than if we change the use of the building. But that's my thought, for what it's worth.
I'll ask if there's anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this. Okay? Further conversation? Yes, Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I'd go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Evans.
Moved and seconded. Rebecca?
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. Okay, our next steps?
Okay, so similarly to Sudip, we're looking at the October 6th City Council meeting. I'll send you an email to confirm that that works for you, but if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out, otherwise, we'll see you on October 6th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Okay, thank you. All right, oh, yes, switching over. Okay, so, our next item on the agenda is 6A. It's a concept review at 1203 East Fabian Parkway Solar Farm. Concept review for a proposed solar farm. The applicant is Forrest Hope of One Energy Renewables. So, how are we going to proceed with this one? Matt, are you going to do the presentation?
Yes, so we'll do a, just kind of a staff report here, and then we'll have Forrest come up and give his presentation.
Okay.
And then we can have a kind of open discussion about the conceptual use being proposed here.
All right, great.
So, yeah, again, we're looking at the site here. It's at 1203 East Fabian Parkway, kind of just west of the Kirk Road and Fabian intersection there. It's a 13, approximately 13-acre site, currently undeveloped. If you guys remember, this site came before us a year ago, or a year, two ago, for a speculative industrial building that was going to be about 156,000 square feet in size. That was approved, along with the annexation of the site, and then along with a comprehensive plan amendment to allow for industrial here, and a zoning map amendment to rezone it to the I-1 light industrial district. That site plan approval, we haven't received plans for that building yet. It has not progressed with the city, and so the site kind of remains undeveloped. That site plan approval also expires next February. And then, what we're looking at, so the proposed use is going to be a solar farm or a solar field, so the site would be completely occupied by solar panels, fixed solar panels. Our current zoning ordinance is silent on solar farms as a kind of principal use in any district. We don't have really any regulations. So, the request here, if it does come before us, it would require a minimum, a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow this use as a special use in the I-1 district. And then, again, assuming, if that's approved, it would then therefore require a special use for the site. So, just a little background here on the property. Again, it was rezoned with that industrial development to the I-1 light industrial district. To the east, we have the OR Office Research District, and kind of that corner there, there's an existing office building. And then, to the west, is actually unincorporated. That's where there used to be a landscaping business there. And then, to the north, we have the Forest Preserve and also unincorporated King County. That's where that cross-country field is. To the south, South of Fabian, we're looking at Potadia there. The corner is an industrial property. That's a somewhat recent industrial development there at the southwest corner. Comp plan, again, the comp- there's an existing office building. And then to the west is actually unincorporated. That's where, there used to be a landscaping business there. And then to the north, we have the forest preserve and also unincorporated Kane County. That's where that cross-country field is. To the south, south of Fabian, we're looking at Potadia there. The corner is an industrial property. That's a somewhat recent industrial development there at the southwest corner. Complan, again, the complan was amended with that industrial development to shift it from commercial-retail to industrial. Again, kind of on both sides, the complan identifies the uses for that commercial-retail use, and then to the north, it's, that's where the landfill and open space is. So just a couple thoughts here from a staff perspective. Again, the zoning ordinance is silent on solar farms as a principal use, so we would need to kind of look into what we would be amending the zoning ordinance to allow for in a, in a text amendment. If we do pursue this, staff recommends that we require this as a special use in the I-1 district rather than a permitted-by-right use. And then I think the question that the commission maybe could look into addressing is, are there any additional zoning definitions or regulations that should be codified and looked into and kind of developed by staff to allow for a use like this? In terms of the specific site, we're looking at a remotely monitored facility, so there would be minimum parking needed, as there would be minimum traffic being directed to the site. The applicant can address more of this, but he's proposing native landscaping kind of in between where the panels will go, and then also proposing a tree screen along the Fabian Parkway southern property line to kind of provide a screening barrier from the Fabian Parkway right away. The connection here, so the kind of use of the site as a solar field, it would have to connect to ComEd's line. It can't connect to the city's electric, so it would have to go south of, or to the ComEd lines on the southern side of Fabian Parkway. Because the city of Geneva provides its own electric utility, the city would not be able to participate or receive any of the electricity generated on the site. And then our Public Works team has kind of taken a look at this, and they've, you know, they've informed us, there have been several capital improvement projects, and along with kind of maintenance of existing utilities in that area, under the assumption that a industrial development would go there. Something like a solar farm would not necessarily take advantage of those utilities and that electric infrastructure that has been put in place there. Again, as I mentioned, the city of Geneva can't accept it, so kind of all residents and businesses living within Geneva couldn't accept any of the energy generated. Unincorporated residents in Kane County would be able to participate. Kind of on a broader scale, there's a potential benefit in terms of adding to the region's production of green energy. And then there's also a potential benefit of, you know, the, the tax benefit, property tax benefit for the city would be greater than the current vacant site. But it should be noted, if an industrial development were to be there, it would, that would allow for increased property tax benefit. And then just finally, some, some questions for the commission to look into. First, just should solar farms be added as a special use in the district, I-1 district? Is a solar farm an appropriate use for the specific site on Fabian Parkway? Are there any special conditions or kind of zoning regulations that we should look into? Just some, you know, suggestions, landscaping, parking setbacks, items like that, that should also be codified with the, with a assumed text amendment? And then are there any concerns that the commission has in terms of the impact of the proposed use on surrounding properties? Those were kind of the main questions we had as a staff, but I'm sure if there's other questions, we can also take a look at those as well. And then here's the, probably a poorly cropped image. We'll let Forrest's presentation kind of give a better image of it, but as you can see, you know, again, the, most of the site will be covered by those fixed solar panels. They've left some, a potential space maybe for a battery there, and then there would be an access drive off of Fabian, which is, currently exists there.
Let this end of his presentation.
Okay, and then we'll let Jesse kind of get Forrest's presentation. Forrest, if you want to come up to the podium and...
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Oh, yeah.
Sure. It's off the screen. Let it go over here. Go over there. Okay.
Thanks, Jesse. Thanks, Matt. I hope to just take 10 minutes of your time tonight, introduce myself, our company, and the proposal we have for 1203 Fabian Parkway. My name's Forrest Houck. I'm a resident of Madison, Wisconsin. My address is 10 North Livingston Street, Unit 201, Madison, Wisconsin, 53703. So we're here tonight, what we're calling Clarence Solar Project, and I hope to just go over quick about One Energy, the project overview, and then really what I'm here tonight is just to clarify, you know, we have not submitted an application or anything to the city yet. I reached out to Matt, and we agreed this would just be a good opportunity to put this concept in front for your feedback, and so we could put that feedback into any future application we put forward. So I just wanted to clarify that upfront. Do I have control here? Yes, here it is.
You should, yeah.
Great. So like I said, just real quickly about my company and myself, where we're at in our engagement process, and then what I see as next steps, and eager to hear your feedback on this, this possible land use. So One Energy was founded in 2008. I've worked for the company since 2016. Our regional office is based out of Madison, Wisconsin. We've done 50 of these types of projects across the upper Midwest, as you see, majority in the state of Wisconsin. I oversee our Illinois operations, and so we've had eight projects that are, we've developed that are currently operating across the state of Illinois, four more that are currently under construction. And so the, what makes Illinois unique to Wisconsin is that you all have passed the Clean and Equitable Jobs Act, which allows for the Illinois Shines Program, which allows for community solar. So what we're proposing to do here, and I think Matt alluded to it, is we would develop and construct a project that would sell power to the Illinois Shines Program, and that would allow people, consumers of ComEd, to subscribe directly to the project to receive about a 20% discount on their energy savings. And so this allows folks specifically who, you know, I'm able, I'm lucky enough to own my own home, and I made the choice to put panels on my own roof, but for folks who rent, or for maybe you own a home that's shaded, you know, you don't have the ability to put panels on your own roof, subscribing to a solar project allows more people to directly engage with the benefits of renewable energy. And so, just a little bit about the project and how we came to it. So as you all know, it's located in the city of Geneva, about 13 acres. Our projects have a lifespan of about 30 years, and that's because that's what the warranty is from the manufacturer for the solar panels. And so if we were to go through this process, we would enter into a lease with the current landowner for a 30-year land lease, and then after 30 years, the project would be completely removed, and the parcel would once again be vacant and be ready to go into another future land use. I kind of like to talk about it as a bridge for, you know, gaining, as Matt referenced, to getting more tax revenue dollars in the door now, and then freeing up the parcel in 30 years for an industrial use down the road. It's currently vacant. It used to be farmed, but I understand it hasn't been farmed for several years. The energy that would be generated by this project would power up to 1,000 homes, and now I know Geneva has its own municipal utility, but if we were to use the population of Geneva as a reference point, that would be about one in eight homes in Geneva could be powered by this project. And so if we were to go through this process, we hope to get this project online by the end of next year. What brought us to this property? We found this property as a good fit for what we call a transitional property in terms of, you know, you have the landfill to the east, commercial uses to the, I'm sorry, landfill to the north, commercial uses to the east, and Matt referenced the 500,000-square-foot industrial building that was put just across the street at the corner of Kirk and Fabian Parkway. The current landowner, as you all are aware, originally proposed a similar type of building for this parcel, but given that development, and I guess multiple other developments along Kirk Road, they don't see a market for a building that's of this smaller size compared to the services that can be offered by larger industrial buildings. So we have a relationship with the broker, and he reached out to us thinking that, since he's not going to be moving forward with his industrial building plans, he thought this site would be a good fit for some of our needs. And so what we're proposing, and what Matt quickly referenced, is occupying about 12 of the 13 acres, when you include setbacks, with a fixed-tilt solar array. The proposed systems are two parts, and I, one of the parts I'd be interested in getting your feedback tonight is, the first part is that ground-mounted solar array. We do have carved out a little bit of space for an optional battery component. We're still in the early stages of our electrical study with ComEd, but we think the site is a good use for both solar and battery. As Matt mentioned, we'd be connecting to ComEd line directly across the street on Fabian. We plan our sites with a native pollinator mix, about 20 to 30 species that are specifically chosen because they don't grow higher than 36 inches tall. We don't plant sylphium, or, for example, because that would grow to a height that would shade the panels, but a lot of species that you have in the front yard of your city hall here are things we like to use. Coneflower and verbaneum and black-eyed susan. Actually, the, I want to scroll back to that first photo. This was a project we did outside of Stockton, Minnesota, and around year three is when the black-eyed susans sort of pop. And so we like to, there, it kind of goes, yellow flowers come first, and then purple, and then the projects we built seven years ago are actually getting into a nice variety with, including sunflowers. Anyways, I digress. Back to the array. So the entire 13 acres will be planted with a pollinator mix. We propose a vegetative screen of six-foot-tall evergreens being planted every 12 feet along the frontage of Fabian Parkway. We'd be using, another thing we like about the site is it already has an installed driveway off of Fabian Parkway that we could just repurpose for the project. And talking about the benefits of the project, I like to start at the parcel and go up. So something Matt already mentioned is, you know, property taxes of a site like this would be about $35,000 a year, which my understanding is that's about 10x of what the vacant property is generating in terms of property taxes, and that chiefly would go to Geneva schools. We've talked about energy savings. If we were to go through with a special use permit, we'd like to include a report that estimates the community benefit of that energy subscription savings is around $150,000 a year. Understand that's not going to folks who live in Geneva, but, you know, we're at a point where energy bills are going up, and about one in six households in America are technically energy burdened when they're spending more than 5% of their income on their utility bills. And so these subscriber savings are really important for folks like that. Kind of going one step off of the parcel, kind of that regional benefits, this job would create about 30 high-skilled trades positions when the project, mainly electricians and operators, to install the project. And then finally, although we can't deliver energy subscriber savings to members of the community, something we like to do is to make a direct panel donation to local nonprofits and the school districts. So that way, you know, nonprofits, in our experience, nonprofits and schools, you know, directly are impacted by having high overhead costs, and part of that is their energy bill. Solar panel donations allow for those benefits to be borne by nonprofits and the city, I think it's School District 304 I've already spoke with, and trying to get that going for a solar panel donation at the local school. So with that, oh, yep, and then I just wanted to clarify that the state law has put forth a pretty strict definition of how these solar projects are taxed through property tax, and it comes out at about $35,000 a year, which would be about $1 million over the 30-year life of the project. And so, yeah, next steps. Really appreciate your time tonight, and eager to hear any thoughts or questions or suggestions of how we could improve this proposal. Taking that feedback, we would like to prepare that zoning ordinance text amendment and SUP application and submit it later next month. In between now and then, it's our standard practice to host a community meeting, just to kind of get the word out on the project, and, you know, for folks to understand what's going in, where is it, how can they participate as subscribers or not, and then hopefully present again in front of you at your November hearing, would be our hope. So, thank you for your time, and eager to hear any thoughts or feedback you have on the proposal.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain the battery option a little more? What, what would it mean to have that there?
I feel like I planted you in the audience, so my next slide is, what we like about batteries is solar works great by itself. Solar's generation profile matches our generation usage largely. My house is heated with natural gas in the wintertime, but it's cooled by my air conditioner in the summertime, and so solar generates most of our electricity in the summertime to match with our electricity peak in the upper Midwest. What batteries do on top of that is, we design our project, so we would call this a five-megawatt, or a two-to-five-megawatt solar project. That number is the number of the inverters. We usually put more panels on the site than there are inverters, which is changing the DC to AC. Essentially, we're overbuilding the site. So we are, that allows us to get up to maximum generation quicker, but this is what's called clipping energy. All of that energy that's happening in the middle of the day, we don't get to sell, and so a battery will allow us to hold on to that energy and then disperse it to the grid kind of in the evening hours. So that would be the benefit of having a battery on the site. And we, based on our early studies with ComEd, it looks like it would be a good fit electrically, but we want to just kind of get your feedback on whether you think it would be a good land use before we put that into our proposal.
And if, this is probably more for staffs, I don't know if this is the time, but if we were to, would a change in the zoning require us to determine whether batteries were allowed or not? Is that something we need to include?
Um...
And is there a reason we wouldn't want it? Is there a downside?
It's a good question. I don't know if there's a downside. It'd be something we'd have to look into, if that's a, you know, a stipulation of the specific use. Yeah, I think that'd be something for staff to kind of, yeah, look into more.
What's the profile of a typical battery onsite? What does it look like?
Yeah, the battery packs that we've used, they are kind of a Tesla pack, they're called a mega-pack, and they largely look like a storage container. And so, you know, eight feet tall, 12 feet long, metal corrugated, and then with battery cells lined on the inside, kind of like a server rack, is what it looks like when you open it up. Our solar panels, for reference, they are placed on metal piles that are driven into the ground. The piles go down about five to six feet under the surface, and that's our reveal height is about five feet, so I'm about six feet tall. So that steel pile sticks out, and then we mount the panel on top of that steel pile at a 52-degree angle, so the leading height of that panel is usually around eight to 10 feet tall. And I mentioned this with Matt, another reason we like the site is, you know, we tried to look for three things in a site. A site that has a willing landowner, which we have here, electrical interconnectivity, which we have across the street, and then willing land, and site suitable. So some, a site that we don't have to do much improvements to before we put the solar in. So those are the three technical things we look for. In addition to those three things, I like to look for a site that I think fits within its neighbors, and so with the neighbors being a commercial use, a current, a former landscape company, and then the landfill to the north, we see, you know, putting in 13 acres of pollinator habitat with silent, non-moving solar panels as a good neighbor to those three things. Yeah.
And when you remove this in 30 years, is there any lasting impact to the site that would limit redevelopment in any way?
Thanks for the question, yeah. The state has a law called, we enter into an agricultural impact mitigation agreement, which we do on all of our projects, and that requires us to put a decommissioning bond down. So we get an independent engineer to put forth an estimate of how much it'll cost to remove the project. And so, you know, knock on wood for my career, but if something were to happen to One Energy, that money would be put aside for the project to be completely removed, and everything is designed to be, you know, steel piles, we pull out of the ground, the wiring is dug at three, six inches deep, but that would be completely removed, and everything has a high salvage value, so steel, aluminum, and copper. The only thing that would be a little bit more involved would be the 10-foot pad that we would put the transformer on. That'd be concrete, so that would have to be jackhammered out, but that, other than that, there would be no lasting effects.
Thank you.
There's no maintenance requirements, it's pretty low maintenance, right? You know, you're not going to be on the site, it just basically runs.
That's right, yeah. Our, you know, the project takes about four to six months to be constructed. During that time, we estimate around 25 round trips per day of workers onsite. And then once the project's energized, we have one electric maintenance technician that comes in on a monthly basis, and one vegetative maintenance technician that comes in on a monthly basis.
So it's remotely monitored, diagnostics and everything?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Yes?
So you, you mentioned that 30 years is the life of the panels?
That's correct.
So, and, and you would decommission the site. Why wouldn't you replace the panels and continue to operate?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. What you're describing is called, in the industry, it's called repowering, and there are full, there are other companies that do that. Typically, how these, the, the paperwork that underlies... Typically, how these, the paperwork that underlies these deals include a land lease and the power purchase agreement and the permit, and all of those things are usually structured to expire at 30 years. So if you were to come in and repower, you would likely need to negotiate a new lease, a new permit, and a new power purchase agreement. Not impossible to do, but it is a, it gives the city or the authority having jurisdiction a second decision point of, do we think now is a better time for a different land use on this property?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, any questions from the audience? Okay?
Size of the battery?
Yeah, that's a great question. The question was, what is the size of the battery? And so, I think we talked about the volumetric shape of it. We would hope this would be what's called a four-hour battery, which would mean we would size it to hold the power that's generated by the site for a maximum duration of four hours. So essentially, that gets you from noon to four, or from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then that's measured in megawatt-hours, so that'd be a four-megawatt-hour battery. And I think, you know, I'll work with Matt to potentially, it might sound like there'd be a special use permit, and then maybe two separate text amendments here, one for solar, one for battery, or we'll kind of figure that out.
Yeah, we'd have to navigate that. I am curious, just from the commission's perspective, if there's any other kind of zoning regulations that we think are important to discuss, or something, you know, specific to this use, talking about setbacks, landscaping requirements. Yeah.
Mine is really more of an observation. So, a year ago, we downgraded the zoning from commercial to industrial, which meant we gave up any chance of sales tax, and we took a substantial hit on valuation because industrial is valued at less than commercial. And now we're being asked to consider basically making this thing tax-exempt. $35,000 on a parcel this size is negligible amount of money. If this was an industrial building, it would be a minimum of five times that amount of tax. So I, for one, have a serious question about taking this off valuable tax rolls for the next 30 years.
And we, just to that point, we did, I had kind of city staff look into just an estimate of comparable industrial sites and kind of what their taxes look like, and then just looking at the size of the site and what it might look like here. On average, and again, it's an estimate, it looks like an industrial facility here would probably generate somewhere between $250,000 to $300,000 in tax, using, again, comparable sites in the area.
Go ahead, yeah.
Are, as we think about this, this would apply elsewhere within the industrial district. Does staff see other sites where this might come up as a potential use?
I don't have any others off the top of my head. Again, we're a fairly built-out community, there's not a lot of large vacant sites in town, this is probably one of a handful. And I even say in a handful, I don't know what those other sites would be off the top of my head. But, yeah, like you said, though, it would be a special use in a zoning district that covers more than just this site. But the special use does kind of give the city a chance to do a case-by-case analysis.
Right, and also, should we decide that this site isn't one that we're willing to downgrade, that's not necessarily a reason to not allow it as a special use within the district? Is there anywhere in, there's nowhere in Geneva where this is allowed?
Correct, yeah. The zoning ordinance is completely silent on solar farms. Again, we allow, you know, residential or, you know, other facilities to put rooftop panels up, you know, subject to building permits, but as a principal use, this is not something that the zoning ordinance currently addresses.
And can you give us an update on the North Kirk property, since that's the other big vacant parcel nearby?
Just to the, to the east here?
Across Kirk.
I believe that one is still being worked on to try to find a tenant for the site. I don't have a recent update.
There's nothing active really?
There's nothing active that we have received as of, as of today, no.
And this Batavia site across the road, I haven't seen a truck there since it opened. Is it in use at all, do we know?
I, I don't keep tabs on it. I don't, to be honest, I don't know. I have seen trucks there recently, but, like, a couple, but I don't know that that means there's a tenant in there. It could just be someone parking there.
Matt, have you had a chance to just do any canvassing on what state Illinois communities are doing in this area?
We, so we haven't yet. I think that'd probably be a great next step to look at.
Just anybody's actually tackling this?
Yeah, I've looked at St. Charles and Batavia, I didn't see anything in their codes that specifically address this either. It looks like Aurora, I checked out theirs, too. It looks like theirs allows it as like an accessory use. I didn't see anything related to principal use there. But I think that'd be a great kind of study for, for staff to do before.
I did a little bit of digging a few years back, and it seemed that where it was allowed as a principal use, it was usually a special use in any near-industrial districts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wondering, conditions that they might have on it?
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's, that's fine, we're just talking.
Yeah, no, I think, so I think, you know, the 12 projects I've done across the state, my first projects were out in Joe Davies County, you know? And you can't get much more rural than Joe Davies County. And then, over time, the way the interconnection grid has just sort of filled up, more projects are moving towards Chicagoland. And so last year, the two projects I worked on, one was in McHenry outside of Woodstock, and one was in the city of Chicago Heights, actually, in South Chicagoland, and that was a vacant industrial land. Again, very, kind of similar to this, 13 acres in size, in dimension, and the city had owned it because it had been tax-exempt for the last 10 years. And so, for them, it was also sort of a bird-in-the-hand choice of downsotting industrial use. But that's what those kind of sites were looking for, and again, we, the reason I brought it forth is the owner of the site, who had previously been hoping to use an industrial use here, doesn't see that happening in the next, you know, five to 10 years, and so that's why he reached out to me. So, but, just wanted to provide a little bit more context of why we're not just, you know, how we came to this parcel.
I think kind of going back to Ben and Tim, your points, you know, one question is, do we want to do this as a tax amendment just in general, to allow this, you know, and have this codified in Geneva's code? And then the other question is, I think for Forrest's sake, is this a site that the commission would even consider allowing this use at? I think that's really the primary question that would benefit Forrest here. The special use is more of a, I think, kind of a conceptual question of, is that even something that we think we should be speaking to and codifying? I don't know that I see harm in adding it to the zoning ordinance to have regulations on it, but...
Yeah, I don't see a downside to allowing it as a special use, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't want to have that option, whether or not this specific site is, you know, that's a tougher question.
Right. It's definitely an interesting concept, for sure. You know, something we got to start doing more of, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and I don't need, I don't expect to have your full answer tonight, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't barking up the wrong tree, so to say. If this was a hard no, I would, I would just kind of leave, leave that dog alive, but if it's a conversation worth having, we're happy to put together our application and come forth through the formal process, but I really appreciate Matt's guidance in setting this up, so we don't have, just make sure we're, you know, not coming in out of right field.
Yeah, I would certainly be open to considering it. I've seen a reason to turn it down before learning more.
Tim?
I was just gonna encourage the applicant by saying, there's only four of us here, this is a seven-member panel, so.
True.
There could be more enthusiasm.
Awesome, appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fairly enthusiastic about it.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, I, again, it's something we really need to start thinking about, and retrofitting existing structures as well. I mean, we do have to start doing stuff, so, you know, this site, we can talk about that, but, but, you know, overall, I'd love to see these kinds of small-scale things, this is where it's at. This is where you really make traction and you can get projects done. You know, these big mega projects are hard, but these, these nice, nice little projects, so.
Yeah, appreciate that. That's our bread and butter, 50 projects adding up to about 200 megawatts, and some of those large projects, it's one project that's 200 megawatts. So it's, we, we like to try to tailor our projects to the community, so.
Yeah, and again, that these, a bunch of smaller-scale projects can make a big difference overall. So, I mean, again, it's all, it's all relative, so.
And I'm just, so I'm just curious, too. So one of the points, and Forrest has talked with, with kind of our development staff team in our electric division already, but one of their concerns is that since the city is its own municipal provider of electric, we, as the city, would not be able to really receive a benefit.
Got to change that.
That doesn't mean that there isn't a benefit, again, to the wider region, but is there any concern there that the city isn't really seeing a benefit to this?
It's unfortunate.
I got to confess, it's a major issue for me.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate. I mean, I don't know, but why is that?
Again, it's...
Because we buy it through ComEd?
And maybe I'll let Forrest speak to it a little more, but it's, yeah, we don't...
Subscribe directly to third parties or something?
Yeah, I think because we don't purchase our energy from ComEd, and this is through the Illinois Shines program. We cannot...
Oh, okay.
...receive that power that's generated from that.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that was my initial conversation with Public Works. Granted, I have a little bit more homework I can do on my end, there's, so, our business is selling electricity, and we cannot go through, we can choose not to go through Illinois Shines and sell our energy to anyone, but the state set up this program specifically to incentivize projects like this, so that by going through Illinois Shines, we make our power available to subscribers. And the way the state structured their program is through the ComEd purchase power system. And so, I can do a little bit more homework, maybe I can find a creative solution to bring more benefits to the residents of the city through the program, and if not through the program, like I mentioned before, I've reached out to the Northern Illinois Food Bank and the school district, if there's other suggestions of entities we could directly donate panels to, to offset behind-the-meter consumption, either that or city buildings, we've done that before, too. Trying to, I want to address the fact that usually this project benefits the folks who live in these communities, and if we can't do that, how can we do that? Is a question I'm, we'll dig into further.
Matt, how long is the agreement that, I mean, doesn't Geneva's agreement come up for review periodically?
For the, for the electric?
Yeah.
It's a great question. I'd have to check with the electric division on that. David, I don't know if you...
I don't know the exact date, but I think it's like in the 40s, like it's a ways away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, I know 30 years, we, in the, in the utility business, 30 years is a temporary use, because the people sign these contracts for five decades. But I know for land use purposes, 30 years is a long time, so we're just here to have that conversation and see if we can thread that needle together, so. But anyways, I really appreciate all's time, and unless I hear a strong no, we're excited to put together this petition and have a full enthusiastic conversation with you later next month, so.
All right, okay, very good. Appreciate it, thank you. Nice presentation. All right, public comment? No public, general public comment? Yes, sir? Yes?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Bill Cale, I'm a resident of the city of Geneva, and I just wanted to come here, I came out here expressly for this particular program, I was very excited to hear about it. So your first comment from residents is what they would think about it, is I think it's a wonderful thing, I hope we can pull it off. Excellent concept here is how much are we giving up on real estate tax stuff? I don't know if that's more for the city council to contemplate, whether they want to do that with it or not, but if we could pull this off, I think this would be a wonderful thing, the whole world needs it, and for, as a resident, and I realize we get 3/4 of our power from Prairie State, my soul needs it, and I think I might not be the only one in our community to do that. As far as replacing energy, we do buy all of our, we already have contracts for all of our energy as a municipal utility, but we will have different ending dates for the different supplies, we get stuff from Settlers Hill, which I think is good for about 10 more years, and we've got a current contract with Nextera for about 20% of our power, which is good for about another 10 more years, it's a current new contract. But the one with Prairie State, the Prairie State contract is a 50-year contract that runs till like 56 or something like that, a long, long time, but because of the law you referenced here, the Clean Energy Jobs Act has a closed date on Prairie State at 2045, and they have to cut their power back by about half in 2038, so it's a little over 10 years. So the, the plant will be here for a little while, but then shortly after, you'll be looking for more power, and just by building more electric power, you help lower the price of power everywhere, and this is something that's getting to be a really big deal currently with all of the data centers that are going in, a lot of power is going up, and we're really desperate to find out how and where can we possibly build new power shy of, you know, large power plant, large nuclear plants, which take a very long time. Possibly, somebody will build small modular nuclear reactors, those have been legal in Illinois for two years now, and whatever the economics are, nobody's decided to build one yet. There's a lot of hope for new gas plants, in fact, there's a lot of backlog for those, and those have like seven to eight-year lead times just to get a hold of gas turbines, so those aren't coming online very fast. So there will be, going forward from here, probably for the next several years, a lot of pressure about how and where it can get new power, so here it is, right in our lap. We both get to help minimize emissions in the world a little bit, even though we get so much power from Prairie State, and it will help with, relieve some pressure on current energy prices and going forward. In about a decade, we'll be looking to buy alternative energies, we'll be wishing there were a lot of power supply around, so it wouldn't be so expensive. So, I don't know, like I say, that that's a very valuable piece of real estate, but the guy who owns it doesn't seem to think he can do anything else with it, that's beyond my pay grade, so I hope you all get to have, good luck contemplating this project, and we get to see it come, come to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think we have any other comments, so that would be other business.
All right, yeah, so just, just a couple, couple updates here. As I mentioned kind of earlier with the other applications, our next, the next city council meeting is going to be the October 6th city council meeting, we'll have these applications for the special use and the, allowing the ground floor as a special use, and then we'll also have our city-initiated text amendments that came before at our last meeting, those will go to the city council at that meeting as well. So we'll have an update, actually, at our next PCC meeting, which will be October 9th, so just a couple days later, we are going to have that meeting, I think Jesse sent out an email to everybody kind of confirming that meeting, we've got one variation, residential variation for a front porch addition, so it should be, that's, that's the only item on the agenda, so it should be a fairly quick one, but if there's any questions or comments on that, you know, feel free to reach out to myself or Jesse, we can try to answer those questions for you. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes?
I would like to ask staff to take a look at something. So I think it was last week in the city of Buetteka, they passed an ordinance placing restrictions on electric scooters and motorized, basically mini-bikes within the city, not e-bikes, but I am seeing it increase.
I know our police department is looking into that actively.
It's becoming dangerous.
So we met about this with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee at our last month's meeting, and it was a question raised of, should this be something that the city is looking into? We, there was actually a presentation done by a group called Ride Illinois.
Well, that's okay, if you're looking into it, you know...
Well, just, so, Ride Illinois is kind of an advocacy group in the area, they basically said that there's going to be a bill brought before the state...
Yeah, I wouldn't wait for that.
...in the spring session that was going to address the issue.
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
So that was, yeah, that was, that was their feedback, was to wait until, basically wait and see until if that expansion...
Wait until somebody gets run over.
Yeah, but there have been...
I would advocate doing this at the local level sooner rather than later.
Yeah, but like David said, I think our police department is actively looking into it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything.
Move to adjourn.
Thanks, Ben.